Okay, I'm gonna call to order the APCD meeting for September 14, 2010. And roll call.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Hi.
Supervisor Long? Supervisor Foy?
Here.
Mayor Miller? Mayor Holden? Councilmember Brennan?
Present.
Councilmember Morgan? Councilmember Sharkey?
Present.
And Supervisor Zaragoza?
Present. And now we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance and we're gonna have Councilman Sharkey lead us in the pledge.
Ready? Aye, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. And we have item number four. It's our minutes and I understand that we'd like to have those continued. Have a motion to continue.
Continue.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is done. Item number five. Is there any concerns from the board members, any items that we'd like to change or writing? So, none? Board comments? Any board members have any comments? Seeing none, we'll go to item seven. And this is the air quality standards and we have a report on that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Chris Frank, air quality engineer. The Carl Moyer Program provides grants to local businesses that voluntarily replace unregulated, high polluting diesel engines with new lower emission equipment. We're recommending approval of three Carl Moyer Program grants totaling $171,411. One grant will help buy new lower emission propulsion engines for a commercial fishing boat and the other two grants will help replace four farm tractors with two new lower emission tractors. The agricultural assistance program helps farmers buy new equipment, replacement equipment, when state air quality regulations make their old, high polluting equipment illegal to operate. We're recommending that your board approve $455,770 in agricultural assistance grants and these grants will help 12 farm operations repower 25 irrigation pumps with new lower emission equipment. The combined emission reductions from these projects will be about 23 tons per year of ozone precursors, 1 ton per year of diesel particulate matter, and 1,000 tons per year of greenhouse gas. Your approval would authorize the APCO to sign the grants and make any necessary administrative changes. And some of the grant applicants are attending today's meeting. That's all I have. I'd be glad to answer.
Are there any questions, Chris, from the board members?
I'm sorry, I didn't see any questions. Just a quick comment before I make the motion. It's nice to see that our outreach to the ag community and nice those folks are here. I recognize certainly, I guess on the first item, some folks originally were gonna go for 10 tractors. I imagine, what is the cost? I mean, we're not buying the whole thing, so there's a substantial cost to the grantee also.
The grants range from 50 to 85 percent of the cost of the new equipment. And it's based on cost effectiveness. The offer is made based on a cost effectiveness cap.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move the item.
For a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That's approved. And, okay, we have a public hearing on the fiscal year 2010-11 service rates and fees effective September 14, 2010.
Here's Zaragoza, members of the board. I'm Mike Fiegus. Pursued to Health and Safety Code, Section 42311, the district is permitted to recover our costs for services rendered in the form of fees when we provide services as required under the federal and state Clean Air Acts. The amount of revenue we collect is based on the demand for services from the public. Similar to previous years, there are three main types of charges. The service hourly rates, duplication fees, and miscellaneous fees. The service hourly rates reflect the cost per hour of a particular worker classification, including salaries and benefits and allocated overhead. Duplication fees consist of the fees we charge when preparing materials, duplication of materials for the Public Records Act requests and subpoenaed records. And our miscellaneous fees include fees for bad checks and witness fees. For fiscal year 2010-11, the service rates are slightly, well, higher than last fiscal year. First, I'm gonna cover the two classifications that actually impact the district's fees. First is the air quality specialists where we actually charge for observing source tests, that's the inspectors, and there's no change from last fiscal year. Next is the APCD engineer, the air quality engineer. There's a 3.5 percent increase and this is for permit processing. The actual, the main, well, the actual cause of the increase with the engineer is the fact that we're heading into succession planning for the deputy APCO and as we enter this transition phase, there's gonna be a new manager, I'll discuss this in the next item, over the engineering division as we move into the succession planning phase. So this is gonna be a temporary bump up in the service hourly rate for the engineer. Next, we have two other classifications that are rarely used for charges and this is the air quality meteorologists had an increase of 2.7 percent. Once again, the increase here is caused by the fact that we're gonna have a manager of the monitoring division as part of this temporary succession planning phase. The instrument technician service rate has increased by 13 percent. With both of these, the meteorologists is maybe once a year we charge during a major wildfire and where our services are rendered to other agencies. With respect to the instrument technician which had the larger increase, I can only think of in the past 21 years of one instance when there was a charge and that was during the Olivas Park mushroom fire and we were deploying additional monitoring equipment that we had on loan from the state, so, and there was additional canisters being set out at that time.
So, if you hardly ever use it, why are you gonna increase it? What's, what are you trying to do?
We're just basically setting these rates based on the budgeted salaries. And if it does arise, we're in a position to assess to cover our hourly rates.
And you call these, the other ones you call temporary because of this manager?
Exactly. I'll cover it in the next one, but we're, as we, we're gonna be basically...
Reorganization.
Reorganization. And so there's gonna be a temporary bump up in the allocated overhead for some positions, but that will drop off.
Well, are we gonna reduce the rate then later or is...
I would assume it would.
Or you just, if not, do you have any in your budget just to absorb that so we don't have to go back and redo rates?
We do it on an annual basis. I would expect these rates to drop slightly next year.
Oh, this manager's gonna, when you say temporary, it's gonna be, that person will be released a year or longer or something?
Yeah. And the duplication charges related to publicly accurate act requests and all the miscellaneous fees, including bad checks and witness fees, there's no change from last fiscal year. We're recommending to your board adopt a resolution for the fiscal year 2010-11 service rates and the fees, including amended Schedule A. And that's all I have. Be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Michael. This is a public hearing, so I don't have any speaker cards, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to, to speak on this item? Okay, if not, then we'll close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the, of the board?
I sense that Supervisor Foy, you may have some problem with this item?
Yeah, I'm concerned. I mean, part of our succession planning, we're all, we're all pretty much...
But, so, so, so a question I have for, for our council is how many votes does it take for an item passed here?
We need six.
You just need a majority of the quorum.
Okay.
Majority of the quorum? Right. Oh, okay.
And, and I, and the next item, I'm sure he's gonna clarify what Michael is doing here on the reorganization that, that he's proposing. So, okay, so let's take roll call on this. The motion, who made the motion? Let me see, let me back up. Do we have a motion?
Move your group, please.
Second? First and second? Let's go ahead and take the, a individual vote on this.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Foy? And Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes. So what is it, five to one?
Yes.
Okay. And that passes? Thank you. And the next item is to establish the new classification and salary range for a manager engineering and manager monitoring position effective October 3, 2010. Michael.
Since 2006, the district's compliance division, engineering division, and monitoring division have reported directly to Mr. Keith Duval, our deputy air pollution control officer. He's performed in this job in a stellar manner, there's just no doubt. He's handled a very large span of control, very complex issues and a wide range of issues. But it's time to reevaluate that situation because, well, Mr. Duval is considering retirement and it looks like at this point it's less than one year away. As part of the succession planning for Mr. Duval's eventual retirement, the better managed the engineering and monitoring... the engineering and monitoring divisions, staff is proposing to establish two new line manager positions. They would initially report to Mr. Duval. One position would manage engineering and the other our monitoring division. The proposed manager of engineering would have a maximum salary 15% higher than the maximum salary of a supervising air quality engineer. And the monitoring manager would have a maximum salary 15% higher than the supervising air quality specialist classification. Both of these promotions would be internal to the district. And the existing positions, whoever they might be, when these managers are actually promoted, those existing positions would be eliminated. It would, this would implement the first phase of our succession planning for the deputy APCO position. The second phase would be presented to your board at a later date. It would include one, deletion of the deputy APCO position and creation of a monitoring, I mean, a compliance manager and a manager for the planning division. All of those managers would report directly to me. The end result of the succession planning would have the district structured into a professional bureaucracy, which is very common for smaller government agencies staffed by professionals. Two-thirds of the salary increase are included in the budget, and one-third can easily be covered within the budget. And the reason for the discrepancy is our budget, and it's my fault, contained a 10% salary increase in our initial projection. And when I took a look at that, I realized we were going to have salary compaction issues because there has to be at least 7.5%. And what we've seen happen in the past is when we ever do get around to seeing salary increases, sometimes the unions move ahead of the managers. That timing gets off, you end up with a Y rate, it gets pretty darn complicated.
So, Michael, that'll take care of the compaction issue then?
That would take care of the compaction issue. The other thing is, I looked at the position I held, which was the line manager in the rules and technology advancement division. It was set at the RMA Services two managers. And when you look at this 15%, it brings you right in line there. So, it seems like it makes sense. Your board standing committee reviewed this proposal on June 22 and recommended approval by your board. That's all I have. I'll be happy to take questions.
And board members, we did have the standing committee meeting, and it was 100%, you know, approval for recommendations to bring to the main board. Is there any questions, Michael, here? And I think that it's good succession planning, and it's like you said, the additional 5% is to eliminate or assist with the compaction issue. Otherwise, you, with a little overtime or additional dollars, you know, then you're down to about 5 or 10% difference.
And when you also look at this, I think doing it at this time, probably the most, for budget development, the two most involved divisions are engineering and monitoring. Engineering because that's where a lot of the revenue comes in. And monitoring because that's where, under new changes to federal regulations, we're going to be doing additional monitoring, which means potentially acquiring another site. There's always the purchasing of equipment, et cetera. So, and I just want to say, when we do reach, we complete the second phase, it's going to be cost neutral.
Any questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved, recommended action.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's approved. And the next item is approval to cancel October 12, November... Move. Okay, I'll second that, too. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Eleven is receiving file right share week October 4 through October 8.
Motion received, filed.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Okay, that's approved. Number 12, receiving file application for a section 105 grant from the EPA.
Summary? Sweet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I don't have any public comments. Any public members like to... Okay, then, and there's no standing committee, so we move to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion for Supervisor Zaragoza for the Fastest APCD Meeting.
Second, thank you. Thank you, Michael.